The other works the more that lost state is best.
I'm gonna get back on to the table.
Shut up. Really?
Oh, you want to come?
Eighteen.
Call this meeting for orders ten AM. Uh, we'll call please. All our orders, all our, ten please as you wish for.
States of America, continue the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for the beautiful way that you've given us, thank you for the opportunity to live in an apartment. Thank you for what you are, just under credit.
Amen.
The set agenda ends, met some last week's regular reading of the funding order from Capitol Roberts. I'm going to approve the considered agenda.
Is that second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
There are no table agenda items, we're gonna have a traffic discussion on the highway H, Hildebrand Road and Highway sixty seven. Do you?
Yes.
Come on down. Speak to the microphone please, start with the mission.
Hi, my name is Brian Connor. Um, as a resident of Luthout Hildebrand Road, there's some concerns that have been brought up to us regarding the concrete plant that's being proposed or being built on the southwest corner of Hildebrand and sixty seven, and the additional traffic that can create, um, with the larger slow-moving vehicles. And so, we have as many questions as we do requests, because we don't know how far along you've gotten in your process of looking, and I'm sure you've had taken some looks at that, but, uh, we weren't for sure, uh, I spoke to the MODAT engineer, Mr. Oakenfuss, and discussed perhaps that concrete plant that was relating to Central Stone, maybe using the new, uh, exchanges that they're gonna be putting in, maybe choosing the J-turn would be safer than using Hildebrand. Um, I don't know if that's a possibility, or if you consider making some improvements to the, like the exit lanes from sixty seven on to Hildebrand. It's, when you come south on sixty seven and top that hill, there's a very short lane to get off and turn there, um, and there's a lot of traffic coming at a pretty high rate of speed down your back, but those concrete trucks being there, we're afraid that's gonna create more rear-end accidents in that area. Um, the other thing that we, uh, thought might be something that you consider would be the eastern portion of that crossover where Hildebrand crosses sixty seven, it has that short section from Hildebrand over to H Highway. There are only probably four or five houses on that road, and one business who uses that road, there's a tremendous amount of traffic uses that road. So there's a lot of cars crossing from there, uh, coming down H, that maybe could be better directed toward the new turn as the meet H intersection whenever they get that, rather than having all that traffic coming across, trying to cross over sixty seven from both directions, and then get concrete trucks and any other traffic will be there, so.
I have a question, is the concrete plant an additional concrete plant or relocation of the existing concrete plant? Is it an additional, a new one?
My understanding is it's a new one.
Okay, second one at that same general area?
Yes, it's north of where Central Stone is at right now, between there and Hildebrand, because they put in some, it looks like roads and stuff, I don't exactly what their plans are, but, uh, that's not really.
It all new rock work is where the concrete plant is going?
My understanding is.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Oakenfuss is aware of that as well, if they discussed that, but then his understanding was it was gonna be a separate entity, uh, as far as a road going through Central Stone, they hadn't planned that, but, um, rather than, it would seem to me much more logical to take those concrete trucks through their existing.
Yes.
Exit on the H where they're gonna have a much safer, uh, interchange now, once they put in these J-turns instead of that crossover. H is a obviously very dangerous intersection up through here, whereas, um, we're just concerned, big residents of that area using that area, it came to all time, that, with the concrete truck traffic being added in, and then H being taken out, made it a little safer down there, we're just planning that much more traffic using Hildebrand as a cut across from H, avoid going down and using the J-turns and, and the concrete trucks are just gonna add additional slow-moving, large, dangerous traffic in that area.
Well, since we last talked to Brian Oakenfuss, that's eight, uh, engineer you're talking about, this traffic pattern has changed, but at that time, we didn't know anything about the new concrete plant, so that's, things have changed in that map, so it probably worth another conversation with Brian.
And, and we're gonna be somewhat limited in that, it's the highway department could have to do any changes to deceleration lanes or whatever.
Right.
We've got about, it's about fifteen or thirty feet, yeah, I mean off onto Hildebrand Road, that's, after that's the county road, the state's responsible for all of this, and it'd have really tight restrictions of what you can do, but Brian will be the one to talk to.
Yeah, I talked to him, but he, he said that I should probably bring it up here as well, because you guys do work together.
Yeah, we can, we can only work with him, he's a pleasure to work with. So, thank you for your points, and we will certainly look into this, and, like I say, it's a whole new traffic pattern since the last time we talked to Brian. So we understand your concern, and we look forward to it. Now, I'm sorry, I missed Phil Brian's name, or Matt's name, I'm sorry, I, I was losing that. So anyway, that's probably why you didn't show up. Thank you. All right, thank you for your comments, your report. Uh, next item, is there anything else you wanna talk about now? Okay. Next item is authorization from the county clerk, who's in the SHRM, Society for Human Resources Management. This is a resource for, a lot of research that needs to be done, you wanna add to this one?
Yeah, um, SHRM is basically just a community for HR employees. Uh, by being a part of this, I'll have access to a lot of different articles and newsletters. Um, they even have an HR advisor that I could contact if we were dealing with a sensitive situation, or if I needed assistance on anything in particular. Um, and they even send out emails every time this, like, state or federal law changes, just so that we can make sure that we're staying, um, compliant, so.
I believe it's a valuable resource for you.
Thank you.
By the way, Lauren's our HR person there.
I, I believe that we, uh, authorize the county to do that, the Society of Human Resources Management.
I have a motion, but I have a second.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
Are there any costs associated with this?
Yes, there will be a cost.
Two hundred and nine dollars a year.
How much?
Two hundred and nine.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think we can afford two hundred and nine.
No questions, any, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Lord. Uh, authorization to purchase tires to repair a roof on emergency trailers, I'll handle this one. Uh, we have five, some number of trailers, or more, of, uh, that belong to the emergency repairist, SEMA, SEMA, but they are not actually our trailers, but we are responsible for the maintenance of them. These trailers have some years on them, and the tires are old and probably not safe for highway travel. And so, I, uh, we need to replace those tires, update them, they're, they're old, they're rough. And also, one trailer has a roof repair needed, there may be other things anticipated, two trailers, okay, but we have some repairs needed. And I, I added that this authority will extend any of the problems we find in those trailers. So I would, uh, recommend that we, uh, replace all of those tires, we think there's about forty. I have bucks done some shopping, they'll be about a hundred dollars a piece or a little less, so that'll fall under our guidelines for the, uh, sealed bit. Uh, we're pretty safe on that, we feel. But, uh, we'd like to get authorization, go ahead and get these things fixed up and make our trailers rubber.
I would move that we allow, uh, Fisher Gallagher to pursue the purchase of new tires and the roof repair on the, uh, trailers, I can't imagine, uh, not doing it, and then the.
Yeah, these tires are open left, and if we had this emergency that we're preparing for, but hoping doesn't happen, the trailers probably won't make it to the, to the site.
Let's hope, uh, years down the road, we gotta do this again, and not use the trailer, that's right.
I'd second the motion, and I made the comment that these, this equipment sits outside in the sun, and it sun, just heats up, it affects about anything, so, it'd really be nice if we had a place we could keep them undercover, but we don't.
Kinda looking at our grant on that, kind of build a cover for them, do that. Okay, any questions? Yes, Lord.
Whose budget is it coming out of?
Good question, uh, we'll work with that. All those there's.
Well.
That is good question.
Then there might be more discussion if it's coming out of my budget. Also, also, uh, are we still, we're still using the northern barn up nearby on tear for storage?
Yes.
For storage, would that not be on location for these trailers?
I don't know if it would be enough. That's a possibility, we'll have to work it down on location to.
Yeah, we just don't wanna keep all our eggs in a basket as far as, uh, location-wise, so, but it's definitely a possibility that we can call it out.
And we'll have to approach the budget situation, I haven't even considered that end of it. My concern was, we don't own the trailers, how can we spend county money on that? But we are responsible for maintenance of the trailers, so that's, that was my primary consideration on it. Okay, I have a motion, second, any other questions? Yes, Dan, fair?
Yeah, at some point, those may be, may be ours, we may own them. Right now, we have accepted responsibility for them, their house here, they could be deployed to anywhere in the state of Missouri if there, uh, is an emergency somewhere, so that's why those tires need to be changed.
Yeah.
Uh, they could, could go anywhere. In the meantime, we have them, we can use them here all we want to, uh, they just have to be able to be deployed in state of, uh, an emergency, and a lot of these things, after so many years, are decommissioned and, and the county will own it.
Okay. The rule of thumb of tires is if it's six years old, it should be replaced, if it's ten years old, it must be replaced. And I think we've hit that threshold on most of them. Okay, I have, any other questions? I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye, aye, thank you. And quick question on the budget, let me, I should have known, probably that. Okay, award a truck driver, uh, bid?
Yes, we, uh. Clay Oakland with Robben Ridge, uh, we had a recent retiree who was one of our truck drivers, retired about a month ago, and we posted a bid, uh, through proper channels, through the union, and through what we have to do there as far as awarding bids, and Clint Engel was our high seniority and an experienced truck driver, and he signed a bid, and we would like to award that position again.
Okay, that's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, myself, John Gross, yes.
I would move that we, on the recommendation of the farm superintendent, that we award the truck driver job to Clint Engel.
And I second that motion.
Okay, any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a report on Maple Street property cleanup.
Yes. Yes, I just wanted to give an update on the Maple Street property, we did receive a certificate of completion from Missouri Department of Natural Resources, we signed for this agreement letter, uh, completion letter back, uh, this past Friday, and just wanted to report on this, basically giving us a, a, a go-ahead, that there are some concerns about this letter, and I'll possibly be, be giving with our recorder of deeds on this, um, it says, uh, commit, county commission certificate of completion, St. Francis County Annex Building, comma, seven eleven Maple Street, Farmington, Missouri. Obviously, it's not the annexed building, so, uh, I've got an email out to Christine O'Keefe, trying to get that verbiage cleaned up, it might be just one of those red tape issues where she says it's gonna take a couple weeks, and we're gonna, we're gonna put on county letterhead and record this with, uh, Mr. Graham, and, uh, have a side letter that basically states this is not the annexed building, they have the wrong address, and just go ahead and get it recorded, because we wanna get this thing sold back on the payrolls, and we'll do more of a, uh, wrap-up on this, once we get this, and we'll be announcing that here in the ensuing weeks.
We believe that the reason they said the annexed building is that's the mailing address of that property now, while the physical address they do state, but we wanna make sure that that's looked, looked into that property. It is a very clean report, uh, there is one thing on there that says if anybody ever finds a contamination that is not listed, not anticipated, then they can go through, back through the system. That's the same with ever, farm land, ever properties in the world, in, in the United States. So if they find they can have it, it's, they have to go through that, so that's the only route that they could come up with, so it's a very clean report as far as the property's concerned, so it's, we're very happy with the letter on that part. Any questions? In other words, the Robben Ridge Department did a good job of cleaning that property. Discussing the possibility of any pay, uh, the printing of paycheck stubs.
Yeah, uh, this is, uh, somebody may not be aware, when we are paid, we, we get a check stub, we already pay, employees here are, with a direct deposit, as proposed by the, um, Land Treasurer, that we discontinue the printed check stub, in fact, I think you sent a notice out that that would be the last one, last paper that they begin. And it kinda caught me by surprise, I, I don't oppose this in certain, in fact, I prefer, but I'm just not sure that the employees are ready for this, I know it'd make a hardship on Robben Ridge, and probably through the Sheriff's Department and the deputies, and just to cut that off, this just seemed like maybe it might deserve a little more discussion or consideration, or whatever it may be. Does anybody else have a comment on it, or?
Uh, Carrie, go ahead.
Well, I think you have something to say.
Go ahead, no, just.
No, you're okay.
I just wondered why, do I need to step up to my girlfriend?
Yeah, probably, but.
Yeah.
All right, so, we use a Tyler system, we pay extra for our Ben Bradley, Farmington, Missouri, uh, anyways, we pay extra every month, if I'm correct, for the Tyler system that every employee in your entire business has access from their phone.
They don't have a computer.
No, no, incorrect.
Okay, so that's not correct.
A lot of people, a lot of our employees in some departments are not computer-aided.
So should we try it?
We try it. We should try it.
What if they don't have an iPhone, right?
Or don't have a computer at all?
How many computers are at the bars?
Two.
Two, for thirty-one employees.
Yeah, we, that, that's a whole point, we just miss this.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's just my question, 'cause I do, I know that Tyler access is there, if they all have an iPhone, it's, it is what it is, but, if you're paying extra for that service, the cost of printing, I'm just gonna take a stab in the dark here, it's about, at a hundred and eighty employees, a hundred and eight dollars per pay period, at twenty-four pay periods in a year, that's twenty-five ninety-two, twenty-six periods, uh, twenty-six periods, whether you pay bi-weekly or twice a month, uh, that would be twenty-eight oh eight, roughly, uh.
Well, you figured it at about eight hundred to a thousand dollars per year, basing it on ten cents a copy, is what we.
Plus your postage and, uh, postage donor envelopes, paper.
Right.
And labor.
Right.
So, I mean, you're gonna be spending twenty-five hundred dollars a year, there's no, there would have to be somewhere around that. Yeah, you currently are, so, as a taxpayer, when I heard about this, I was like, so we pay for a system of monthly cost, plus the cost of the monthly service, to, if that's a hundred bucks, that's twelve hundred dollars a year, if it's twelve hundred, you're either wasting money that I pay in every year, over here, on paying for a service that can't be used, or you're wasting money over here by printing something off that you don't need to print.
So, so you're saying we can't win no matter what?
You're, you're in a catch twenty-two, you gotta decide which one you're gonna do, and in my opinion, it's, I taught my dad before he died how to use a computer. Anybody can learn. It's a matter of orientating and training, that's how businesses, that's how everybody progresses, that's why there's educational systems everywhere that teach computers, computer usage, so why don't we take advantage of these programs that are available to, you know, if they need to learn to use computers, girls, employees, teaching. Carrie?
Thank you. Carrie Glor, thanks for standing for this office, and, first of all, when I read the notice that it was gonna be on the agenda, I just wanna clarify that we're not doing away with check stubs as it kind of reads on the agenda, but the check stubs are gonna continue, and they continue on the Tyler system. And they're gonna continue to exist on the Tyler system, we started the Tyler system in twenty sixteen, any employee who has access to the ESS portal can go in and look up their history all the way back to twenty sixteen, we couldn't do that before. Now, what is ESS to those people who don't know? ESS is a Tyler module that county uses to process all payroll, and information is out there for each employee for their check stubs, their W-two information, their W-four information, they can check on their vacation time, their sick time, and it's mandatory, according to the county policy, that every employee go through ESS in order to get paid. If they don't go through ESS, and an employer or supervisor doesn't approve it, they're not gonna be getting paid, that pay period's gonna be delayed until they do, because it's mandatory, according to our policy. Now, even though we've been on this system since twenty sixteen, we've always made copies in the treasurer's office for every employee, we started getting feedback, why do you make those copies, it's a waste of money, because, you know, I can go to my phone, I can go to my computer, and I can access it online. Well, we knew we had some employees that couldn't access it online, we know they don't have a phone, we don't know they don't have access to computer systems. So what the county commission did at that point was they put it in the policy that the employee or their designate need can go in and put their time in, they can go in and access that employee's information so that that employee has the information and can make a copy of the payroll check, should they choose. Now, a lot of people don't choose to make a copy, but there are a few that need copies, and that designate need, and that department can make those few copies that are necessary to give that employee the information they need. Now, it saves a lot of money, because we're not having to print payroll check after payroll check, copy for every employee. So, having said that, we feel like we're kinda spending money doing a redundant copy that we already have, and already, and employees through themselves or their designate need have access to. So, we wanted to make sure everybody knew ESS that needed it. So, I talked with Harold about setting up training, just in case, somebody had not had a chance to go in and look at ESS. So we had a training, we didn't think too many people would come, we were right, because we know that most people already access it on their phones, on their computers, but we also knew when we stopped making the copies, that there's designates in every department that can assist any employee. We are paying like five hundred thousand for this computer system, ESS is part of that computer system that the commission passed for us to utilize, we wanna use it, we have, uh, new resource officer who is willing to train anybody that needs any help with ESS in any way. Secondly, new employees, whether you realize it or not, are getting set up with county emails, the reason is, we don't want to, uh, co-mingle county information that each employee has with any personal email accounts. So that's a process that they're doing right now, headed in the direction of what we decided to do in the treasurer's office. Again, having said that, if you want us to make copies, we certainly will, but if you decide you want us to continue to make copies, please set a deadline, because right now, I think it's a waste of money and time, and I think training will solve the issue, and the designate need that each employee has, according to our work rules.
I think, go ahead.
Yeah, to be clear.
Yeah.
I don't oppose this, that's what, how I prefer, however, I have problems in the forced compliance, the forced acceptance of.
But the ESS is, if you wanna put it that way, forced compliance, because it's already in our policy that everybody has to use it, we're just not using it to its fullest potential, I would say.
So, but they have no choice.
Every employee must access, every employee or their designate need, that says in the work rules, or the policy, every employee or their designate need has to put their time on ESS, is that right? Anybody?
Well, their designate need would be their supervision, I'm sure.
I, I think, I think it's usually.
And their, put their time on their, anyway.
Pardon me?
They're the ones that would enter the, the employee's, uh, time as approved, anyway, is that right?
The employee does, but it has to be approved by a supervisor.
The employee is supposed to enter their own time.
Not all employees do, they have a designate, for example, in the sheriff's department, it would be Kim, the sheriff's, uh, chief deputy, or whatever her title is.
And then it must be approved by the supervisor.
Because you have to have that.
And submit it.
So, making a few copies for the ones that, you know, do have a little problem with no phone or no computer access, it's a lot cheaper than us running, running a continuous copy of checks that nobody's gonna look at, that they throw in a drawer, that they come and tell us, hey, why do you print those? It's on my phone.
Well, I think that one, for one point, we're in a transition phase here.
True.
And secondly, I think you've worked out a compromise with at least one department.
Yes, the Robben Ridge, everything.
Yes, and we did talk with them, we know it may be problematic for them at this point, especially during their busy season. So, we've talked with the, uh, county clerk's office too, and I think I sent out an email at the beginning that if they had any problems or needed anything for ESS, then the county clerk's office, which is the payroll department, can train them, help them with ESS, and that service is provided, I mean, it's a good service, think about it, if I give you a paper copy and you lose it, it gets thrown away, whatever, it's gone, you're gonna have to have another copy, but with ESS, it is stored off-site, and you can go back all the way to twenty sixteen, when a Tyler was launched, and see all of your payroll history, any employee, so.
Commissioners, also by using ESS, the employee can access the insurance information, loggers information, handbook, so the employee is just, I won't say hurting themselves, but the information is readily available for them.
Privately.
Privately.
It's a really good tool for an employee to have.
It is.
They can go in and, uh, there's a W-four out there that's gonna tell them how their W-four is, right? But they can go in and just play with that, now if they wanna change anything, they still have to count, go to the county clerk's office to change it, you know, if they wanna change the, their deductions with holdings, whatever, but, they can go in and kinda look at, well, hey, if I claim this, or I don't claim that, then what's my net gonna be? And they'll know what their take-on pay is, they can go in two days in advance and see what their pay is, because we, by, um, requirements of the bank, have to do the direct deposit, uh, trip, um, ACH, two days ahead, well, at that point in time, the payroll, payroll's out there, they can know two days ahead of payday, what their pay's gonna be, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys for working out your compromise on this, again, we're in a transition phase, and we're working it out, thank you for this discussion, anything else?
I, I guess, I never really got where I wanted to go, why did you start to hurry to do this, can we make this where it's, we can hear from some of the employees, um, just they wanna confuse it, there's a choice, they can choose to remain getting their, uh...
Like I said, if, if, at this point in time, I mean, if, if you guys want us to go ahead and continue making copies, that, that's okay, but if you want me to, I want a deadline, I would like a deadline on how long it's gonna take with the training, I'd like a deadline on how many more copies I need to make.
Why do you need to know that?
Well, because it's kind of a waste of money, I mean, like I said, we're spending two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
We've done this, uh, payroll, whatever, clean.
Yes. Yes, I said.
So there's a savings, but I, I'm just wondering at what cost is it to the employee? If they had a choice to, uh, remain getting a stub or not getting a stub, would, can we?
But they can access this, their designate need can access the stub, so I don't have to print every stub.
Okay, I, I, I'm still not, I'm not comfortable with the forced compliance of it, if that's what people wanna do, that's fine, it's okay, I have no problem with doing it, and it would save money, but it's saving money at the expense of our employees, I don't, I don't know if that's right, I don't.
But you could look at it as Tyler is con- forced compliance in the first place, because it's mandatory for the county to use it in order to get paid.
That's true.
It's already in our policy.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying it seems like we're pulling the rug out for some employees that I don't feel.
No, we will work and we have, we are, working with anybody who has, uh, trouble at this point in time accessing ESS. We've already, we're doing that now. And again, uh, well, we have a new hu- human resources officer who is the perfect person to, uh, deal with the department's training and access to ESS. So I think that even when a new employee signs up, you know, they're getting a county email and the purpose is so that they can access ESS. So why are we doing that if we're not gonna be using the system the way we're supposed to?
I think in essence, I think we're talking about a couple of different things. One about employee training and for that, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
But then having no choice in how they receive their payroll information, this doesn't sit right with me somehow.
But what difference does it make whether we make a copy or their designated person makes a copy? They're still getting the copy of the information they want. It's just, they're doing it individually, that department. For those, uh, who cannot currently access ESS or don't have, or their designate's not doing it for them, but they're willing to, I think, and some departments, we're working with other departments. So again, I'm in no hurry, but I would like to at least, you know, have some kind of timeline on getting that training and, uh, stop making the copies that are costing the taxpayers money for no good reason other than we have a few that have not, uh, that have problems with getting on ESS right now.
Well, I, you know, I don't think we can come any closer to what we're, before we start off here. The, the forced compliance or the no options in there, I mean, your, your last communication to all the employees was that they no longer get the, the, the stubs and it's like, and it seems like.
Well, you have reached out to departments to troubleshoot, so to speak. We've talked with the sheriff's department, the one that does the ESS entry for those employees that can't. And, uh, she's had no complaints and she's willing to help the ones that she's currently helping now. Uh, again, once they get the training, I'm hoping that, you know, they're, they'll like it and use it, which, you know.
My point is if, if that's what the employees want, I'm all for it. But I, at this point, I don't know. People may not be crazy about that and just have not been able to feel like they could say anything. So can we, we could just off this a little while maybe? Till we learn what the, how to impact the employees, they're getting or not getting this pay stub.
So you want me to continue to make copies? Is that what you're saying?
If it were up to me, I'd just have to print them all the time. But, but it's not up to me and I don't want it to get up to me. But just to jerk the rug out.
I, I, I don't want to jerk the rug out from anyone. No.
When you sent out the notice, they.
We are working with each department that may have a problem with accessing ESS. We talked to the county clerk's office about adding the training.
We've covered that. My point is the, the forced compliance, I have a problem with. So maybe can we postpone this a month or two? Let's see if we can hear from employees, encourage them to.
Are you saying postponing making, not making the copies?
Postponing forced compliance.
Tyler is forced, uh, the ESS is forced compliance, isn't it? You know, but I don't mind to make the copies for as long as they are needed.
Well, uh.
If you feel that I've done it too quickly, that's fine, but.
You already have, uh, uh, compromise set up with the various people, so you print what is deemed necessary at this point.
We will, we will.
Well, it may be, it may not be a problem to any employee. I don't know. I've not, anybody complained to me, but. And I don't, I'm, again, I prefer to read it as direct deposit and I don't.
We have had, we have had, uh, no real complaints. When I talked with Kim, she had heard no complaints. But I do realize, and so does she, that there are employees that need her assistance when dealing with ESS and she's willing to do that. And we are working with the road department as well to, um, make sure everybody gets their needs met. So if there are any other departments that are struggling, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I know. It's unknown.
I have not had any.
If we could have some time to contact the HR or contact, I don't, I don't know.
I have a question. Carrie, uh, have you received any information from any office holders that said they don't want to do it?
No.
Yes, you have.
Do you?
No, I'm not a part of Road and Bridge. They, they.
They, they, the email, I, okay.
I asked office holder. I didn't ask.
Okay. I did get an email from, uh, Clay and we had a meeting. We invited all three of you that day. But it was just me and Clay and John. And we discussed the ESS and the fact that they have not had an opportunity to train, but they're willing to get training. And in the meantime, I said, yes, we'll print those copies for you until you have time to, uh, to get the training and set up a solution.
She said she would continue to print checks for Road and Bridge as long as we needed to and until we got necessary training. And we would be willing, as we can, with a few employees here and there, um, to get our training. But as Carrie said earlier.
Cause this is their busy season.
This is our busy season. It's hard for us to pull all our guys and sit in on training to learn it. So we'll do a few at a time as we can and we're in the process of setting that up. We haven't yet, but we will. And as long as Carrie is willing to continue to print those off for us, we're willing to get this training scheduled and complete.
Thank you for, and I think that's all. Okay. Cam, did you want some?
My comment is very simple, that, uh, we don't want them. If they're filling up our drawer, we don't need them because we know we can go online and print them off. But we, every one of my employees is required to input their own time. If they make a mistake, it's checked by Mindy and, and she, they will correct it or she will assist them and correct it. But they were taught from the beginning that we weren't gonna do it for them. They had learned how to do it. And as far as the pay stubs, if they know they can go online and get it printed off, if they need it for tax purposes or some other issues or borrowing money, all they have to do is check with Mindy and she can get one printed off or they can print their own if they know how to do it. So I understand when you got a large group of people that have access to two computers, it's hard to schedule that input of time. But with the sixteen people that I have, they've all been taught to do that and they do it themselves. So I don't really want the paper.
And they all have their own computer, correct?
They do not all have their own computer. Road and Bridge does, I mean, the road crew don't. But they come in and they share some of the computers, office, uh, office computers when they have to put that information in. But I understand that situation, what you're talking about. But my office, as far as the assessor, we do not want paper.
Just a side note, uh, if mentioned post here earlier, we, we mail very few of these.
Very few are mailed.
Very few are mailed.
So that's not a big cost issue.
Secondly, earlier in this meeting, we had a job change with Clint Pingle and that's one of your two computers.
Right.
At Road and Bridge, so.
So nobody else can use that computer?
Ground truck there.
Well, I didn't say nobody else knows how to use it, but we don't want twenty eight other guys using it.
But don't you have somebody in the office that can input it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we're gonna sell anything today, but could we maybe postpone this to pay period or two and make, um, appeal to the employees that maybe has a different feeling. I, I don't know. Could you contact human resources and let them know?
Okay, so.
And if we learn that there's a couple of people in there, um, that's one thing. If there's more than a few, I don't, I just don't know where this is going. Again, I'm supportive. If the commission wants to do it, that's fine. But I, I just didn't seem there to the employees.
Any other comments?
Yes. I recommend that Commissioner Wilkinson take it upon himself to visit with the employees to get their input. And my second point is you keep bringing up this, this term forced compliance. You signed off, you gentlemen signed off on the company policy handbook, which is in essence forced compliance. So I don't understand why you keep using that term.
Well, and not only that, you know, this computer system has, it's top, that you guys signed off on, you know, it ha, it came with this module that we're currently using, ESS, for every employee so that they, and it's a benefit to the employees because they can look up all of their information. And it's, it's stored off lo, off, offsite, so you don't ever have to worry about your information not being available to you like paper copies. So I just don't know why we're not using this system that we pay forty eight thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars.
Whatever time in the past, whenever, uh, the county, uh, elected to, uh, change from having a paper paycheck to a direct deposit, were the employees given an option at that time whether they wanted to participate as a direct deposit or did they?
There was a, a commission decision sometime before I came, that anyone hired after a certain date would be automatically entered that folder with, and that was not the only thing I would think, but, uh, their participation in, in.
For new hires, it is mandatory that they sign up for direct deposit for, um.
Condition of employment, so to be.
Right.
Forced compliance.
Forced compliance. But if you were here before that went into effect, then you do not have to necessarily do direct deposit. We only have about fifteen or less employees that don't do direct deposit right now.
Well, hopefully, someone, if it's bothering some of the employees, I hope they contact me. That, that's fine. Our human resources, which I will.
Which would you rather? Would you rather they contacted human resources or, cause they are the payroll department that's gonna be getting, that gets it, all this ESS, ESS information to create the payroll.
Could, uh, HR could refer them to me if you, if you're busy to do that. I don't mind. And again, we may find that there's no problem at all. I just don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's good or bad or not or whatever.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
How much are we paying a year, you said?
When we figured it, uh, as far as the number of copies, we're doing ten cents a copy, as I recall, and it was like eight hundred to a thousand dollars a year, but you figured it, or you figured it.
You figured it, not. I've added in for labor and everything.
I did not add in labor to that. I was just talking to copies and.
I, I did your toner, your, when I also added postage.
Right.
So I mean, even if you take out the postage, you're still at, at least nineteen cents a copy. So that's adding in labor costs, toner costs, paper, envelope. You're still gonna be at nineteen cents a copy.
And if they make these copies at the, I mean, there's, don't have the option to get it at the departmental level, their copy, if they so choose, it's gonna cut down on that expense quite a bit. So I don't know what we're postponing exactly. What are we postponing? We're gonna have someone here contacting employees and get some feedback and then.
I was asking to postpone the termination of the.
Okay. Do you have a timeline on?
Pay period or two. Don't, I mean, there's no.
Pay period or two? Okay. All right. And, uh, the road department will walk with as we go along. Is that okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's our meeting. I hear it next week. Other business, any other first lines? Other comments? Parkville reports. The elevator work.
Wait, wait, I have a departmental. Carrie Glor, Saint Francis County Treasurer. And our annual report is that the depository bid is coming due and you'll have to vote on it next Tuesday if you need to vote because it's a mandatory bid required by law. So I don't know if you guys actually have to vote on it. We can talk with county clerk about whether it's necessary, but you will be letting a bid on the depository.
Would you please put that on each other's, Mr.?
It's already on there. Talk with Linda. Is that okay?
The current one, is it first date community?
The current one is at first date community bid. Okay.
Now, the elevator work is finished next door and the package was completed early this week. However, it was the inspection for that was scheduled today. Because of the tornado in Jefferson City, they cannot reach the inspectors. So that has been delayed. And we can't let the public on that elevator until it has been tested by inspectors. They will physically load that elevator with twenty five hundred pounds of load and it must operate flawlessly under that load. And so while it's completed, we can't let it be used until that happens. And of course, Jefferson City has, will share its problems that we have right now. So we'll, we're hoping. Now, there is a clause in the contract that said that we can charge them five hundred dollars a day for every day after three weeks. Of course, this is, I'm not gonna trigger that with this situation. But, uh, the company has done well. They finished a week early at least and beautiful work over there. So that sustains the elevator. Wish it was finished? It is finished, but wish it inspected and usable. It is not at this point. Any questions? We'll do the job. Okay, I'm second to you. All in favor?